Okay, we'll call this Cookville City Council meeting for April 2nd to order, please. Could we have a roll call?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Walmsley.
Here.
All present.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation and give it an up by Pastor Bobby Sebastian from Life Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Pastor Bobby. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the good work that these people do in our community. And Lord, I pray tonight that you would just give them wisdom and your strength in everything that they do, that everything would be done decently and in order, Lord, and that would bring honor and glory to your name. And so, Lord, be with everything in this meeting tonight. And we pray and ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any changes or additions?
Mayor, we do have a couple of changes. Just to point out, item 7F, I will be the sponsor of item 7F instead of Ms. Kiefer. And I'd also request to add item 7J, which would be Consider Rejecting Bid awarded on 12/4/2014 for a long-armed brush truck, and consider awarding the third lowest bid.
Alrighty. Do we have a motion for the agenda as changed?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Okay, and item 5 under Old Business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on March 19th, 2015. Are there any changes or additions to this? Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Okay, item 6 is our consent agenda. We'll be setting dates for five items. Set a date. These will all be May 7th of 2015, Public Hearing on Ordinance 0150408, Amendments to the Zoning Code relating to banners and other temporary non-premise signs. Item B, Public Hearing on Ordinance 0150409, Amendments to the Zoning Code relating to accessory structures. Item C, set a date for a public hearing on ordinance 0150410, Amendments to the Zoning Code relating to real estate offices in the University District. Item D, Public Hearing on Ordinance 0150411, RAO Redevelopment Area Overlay District zoning for properties located at 319, 339, and 349 West 8th Street, and 340 and 346 West 9th Street. And item E, Public Hearing on Ordinance 0150412, Closure and Abandonment of a Portion of Laurel Avenue located between West 8th and West 9th Streets, and declaring it as surplus. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Under New Business, A, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider on First Reading Ordinance 0150305, Amendments to the Zoning Code to allow by right or by special exception a columbarium to the CBD. Mr. Mills?
Mayor and councilmembers, Mayor, just a second. What happens if technical problems occur? This is not working. Can we just put them up? My hand, I did.
Okay.
All he catches up, I'll review this. This ordinance would amend various sections of the zoning code to insert provisions relative to columbarium. The proposed amendments were first initiated by representatives of First United Methodist Church, desiring to establish a columbarium on their church property. Columbarium is a place for the storage of funeral urns. Columbarium are currently not specifically addressed in our zoning code. In the opinion of the Planning Department and the Coach Department, we would categorize the use the same as we would cemeteries and mausoleums. Mike, if you could go to the next side, please. The current regulations for cemeteries and mausoleums are covered in these two sections of the zoning code. Cemeteries are required to be located on sites of at least 10 acres, and mausoleums are required to be on sites of at least 2 acres when not located within a cemetery. Additionally, all structures located within a cemetery, including mausoleums, are required to be set back a minimum of 100 feet from any property rideaway line. Sections 206.4 of the zoning code allows cemeteries as accessory uses for churches and similar places of worship, worship provided they meet the provisions of section 206.5, which again are shown on the screen now. However, the zoning code prohibits or does not allow cemeteries within the Central Business District. A primary reason for prohibiting cemeteries within the Central Business District, and also to a lesser degree mausoleums, is the amount of land area that's typically needed to operate such uses. A second reason for the prohibition is the permanency of such uses. Once a cemetery's there, it's pretty much there for eternity. Columbarium, unlike cemeteries, typically do not require large tracts of land, and can be relocated if necessary. First United Methodist Church is located on Spring and Broad Streets and at Dixie Avenue, and the property is zoned Central Business. The church has indicated a desire to locate a columbarium on a small enclave of their property off Spring Street, and to utilize this site, we'll have to make several changes to the zoning code. Okay. Thank you, Mike. This, on the screen are the proposed amendments to the zoning code relative to columbarium. First, we would insert a definition in the zoning code defining what a columbarium is. Second, we will have to amend section 206.4, which deals with churches in similar places of worship, to indicate that columbarium could be permitted as accessory uses to churches. And 206.5 would be amended to address columbarium and provide specific standards. One of the key components is that they do have to comply with all applicable state regulations. And lastly, the zoning code would be amended in the chart of permitted land uses to indicate that mausoleums and columbarium are permitted uses by special exceptions, and churches are also allowed in these zones within all our single-family residential districts, subject to the requirements, which include a minimum of 2 acres for churches, and as permitted uses in the Central Business CN, CL, CG, CR, PRD, PCD, and MS districts. Proposed amendments have been approved by the Planning Commission and are recommended by the Planning Department.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mills. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this ordinance tonight during a public hearing? No? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing portion. We'll now open it up for the business portion. Do we have a motion on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion among the council? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
7B, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider on First Reading Ordinance 0150306, Rezoning 20.5 Acres Located at 1400 West 12th Street From CL Local Commercial and RS10 Single Family Residential to RM8 Multi-Family Residential. Mr. Mills?
Mayor and councilmembers, this proposed rezoning was initiated by Mr. Mac Jones of Hammond Jones Development on behalf of the property owner, Mrs. Gladys Countess Presley. The general location is on the screen. Mike, go to the next one. Here's a more detailed location of the property. Go to the next one, too, please, Mike. An aerial view of the property. We could come back to these and then stop right here, please. The subject property is identified as a portion of parcel 58 on Tax Map 39, and the portion of this property being considered for rezoning in total equals 20.5 acres. As you can see on the screen, it's contiguous with properties zoned as RS5 Single Family Residential to the east, RS15 Single Family Residential to the south, and a CL and RS10 to the west, and also to the north are unzoned properties, or properties that are located outside the corporate limits. Approximately 8.5 acres of the property proposed for rezoning is currently zoned as CL, and approximately 12 acres is zoned as RS10. The northern portion of the property is encumbered by a blue line stream which parallels West 12th Street, and a pond and potential wetlands, and at least two other smaller streams traverse the property. According to the Cookville Public Works Department, a riparian zone 30 feet in width must be provided on either side of the blue line stream. The Cookville 2030 Plan depicts the northern portion of the property along West 12th Street as being best suited for mixed-density residential development, and the southern portion is being best suited for lower-density residential development. The RM8 zoning district is intended to provide a moderate-density, multifamily, two-family, and single-family residential environment in areas where public sewer is available. The minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirement in the RM8 district is 5,000 square feet. Based on a land area of 20.5 acres, approximately 178 units could be located on the subject property under RM8 zoning. Multifamily use is a use permitted in the portion of the property currently zoned as CL with a density of 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. On the estimated 8.5 acres of the property zoned as CL, approximately 123 dwelling units could currently be built on the property. When we factor in the portion zoned currently as RS10, which is approximately 12 acres, that would allow 52 single-family dwelling units. So assuming the property was developed at its maximum density under the current zoning, the total potential density under proposed zoning would represent an increase of approximately 3 dwelling units. So we've gone from a much higher-density zone CL to an RM8, which is 5,000 for the front part, and basically doubled the density, potential density, on the back part. Mr. Jones has indicated in his submitted application that the reason for the requested rezoning is to allow for the development of multifamily housing for students. A preliminary site plan submitted with the application depicts the location of 156 units, and I believe that's been carved down, so when we have a site plan, that I'll show you in just a second, and would also include a clubhouse. The Planning Department recently met with officials from Tennessee Tech about the needs for student housing. The officials indicate that the university has no more plans for the construction of additional on-campus student housing, and that in fact, approximately 70 student housing units have actually recently been removed for planned campus improvements. Based on this information and university projections for student population to reach 15,000 in the near future, it would appear that there is a need for additional off-campus student housing. Mike, if you could, go through the next few slides. This is a proposal submitted, or a photo submitted by the developer of a similar development they've done in another state. Mike, there's several of those. If you could go through them very quickly. Okay, if you could stop right there. Public sewer, water, and electric service are available for the subject property. There's a sewer pump station located at the northwest corner of the property. Discussions with the Cookville Water Quality Control Department indicate, however, that the pump station and existing pressure sewer lines are inadequate for a significant development of the property. The developer or/landowner would be responsible for any sewer system upgrades necessary to develop the subject property. The developers informed the Planning Department that they have worked out an agreement for an easement to get sewer to the property from another location, and it's also the Planning Department's understanding that the water and sewer department supports the proposal for the developer to provide sewer to the site. At the time, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and adjoining property owner along the southern boundary of the subject property expressed concern about the effect of the development on his property. There was some discussion regarding leaving a portion of the property zoned as RS10 along the southern boundary to provide a buffer. However, this was not included in the Planning Commission's recommendation. It's now the Planning Commission's, or, excuse me, the Planning Department's understanding that the adjoining property owner and the developer of the proposed property for rezoning have reached an understanding or an agreement regarding the establishment of a buffer area. And that is depicted on the screen, a 125-foot buffer area along the southern boundary. It's an area which would not, the developer has agreed not to develop within, and would provide the property owner to the south there a certain level of protection. The proposed rezoning was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission and is recommended by the Planning Department. And Mike, if you could go one more slide, please. And this is again the area. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay, so at this time, again, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there anyone that would like to speak about this ordinance? Go right ahead. Step to the podium, if you will, and just identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Jackie Burks, and I thank you for your time. I've lived in this area for 53 years. I love this area. I love the people that live there. But we need to drive down those streets. I wish you all would, and look at what our friends are facing. There are, within a two-mile radius of Sycamore School, 2,740 apartments, plus they're building more. My son lives in Alexandria, Virginia, and he was talking to me about Cookville, and he said, "Cookville used to be a beautiful city." He said, "It's not now." He drives down the streets I'm talking about. When you look, you see a lot of apartments, you see a lot of strip malls, you see junkyards, you see trash. I just wish that Cookville could be like it used to be. Several years ago, Cookville took part in the Model Cities Program, and people in the west end of town were proud of Cookville. They were proud of what was going on in Cookville, how pretty it was. I wish you all would take time to think about doing some things to beautify the western end of the county. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Yes, sir. Step up to the podium there and identify yourself. A statement of about three minutes can be made pertaining to this agenda item.
Okay. I'm Mac Jones. I'm with Hammond Jones Development in Austin, Texas. We're the developer and the petitioner for this request. Very briefly, Mr. Mills did a fantastic job of describing what it is that we're doing, and a couple of the points about the project. But I'd like to introduce ourselves. We're from Austin, Texas. We've been in business for about 30 years. We've been doing high-end multifamily housing for all that time, and we're very pleased to be able to attempt to do business in Cookville. What we plan for this site is 100 and roughly 140 units. As Mr. Mills explained, the property, with the front part of the property being commercial and the back part being single-family, it already allows for 175 units. And so, the zoning that we're requesting is only three units more than is currently allowed. We're just requesting the zoning because we'd like to spread it more evenly and make it less dense throughout the entire property. It's going to be a high-end development. I think it'll be something to be very proud of. It's going to have stainless steel appliances and granite countertops, and it'll be fully furnished. It's going to have wood-style flooring, a resort-style pool. It'll have tanning beds. It'll have an exercise facility, gaming areas, a computer lab. Believe it or not, these are things that college students demand, and different than when I was there, but they seem to be successful in their demands. The project will be privately financed, completely privately financed. We will have onsite management. We will have a number of security measures, gated vehicular entry, gated access entry. The property will be completely fenced with privacy fencing and iron decorative fencing on the front. We'll have an onsite courtesy officer. We will have a state-of-the-art camera surveillance system. There is rental housing in the area, including adjacent to the property, so we feel like this request is compatible with existing uses that are already in place. It is not a dense project. We are, the zoning that we are asking for allows 160 or so units, but we are committed to doing less than that. We're going to do closer to 140 units. And in fact, Mr. Burks, who expressed some concerns about our impact on his property at the Planning Commission meeting, we've had discussions and we've come to agreement to, a written agreement, to, what we hope is minimize the impact of our project on his. We've agreed to a large buffer away from his property line. We've agreed to directional lighting in our parking lots that will be faced away from his property. We've agreed to a six-foot privacy fence between our property and his at our cost. We've agreed to limit the project to 100, I believe it's 144 units maximum, which is less than the 160 that the zoning allows. And...
We could wrap up in just about 30 seconds, if you could, please. Thank you, sir.
That's it. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Any other comments pertaining to this ordinance? All right, this will close the public hearing portion. We'll open the business meeting portion. Do we have a motion for this item?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. Now discussion among the council.
James, if I might, help me understand again, the issue with sewer is resolved? Is that, did I hear you say that?
It can be resolved. It's, there is a different location from which they can toll. It's off of, would run off of Gibbons Road. Okay, if you might click. Can you see where Gibbons is to the left there? Going down the line to there, you can connect to Assistant. Ronnie, you correct me if I'm wrong on this. So they have, would run an easement across the remainder of the RS10 there to connect over to Gibbons, and they have, my understanding is, reached an agreement for an easement to get sewer to Gibbons, and they would run down to, is that a pump station?
Okay.
Okay. So the water sewer department has looked at it, and it will work. But it's the developer's responsibility to pay for all that. Now, we talked about this a little bit at the work session Monday, and again, Ronnie, you correct me if I'm wrong, this, when the sewers put in to serve this, dudes in this location, that will have additional benefit to the city other than to serve just this site. It'll have the option, some options to change the way some of the sewer would flow to ease the impact on this pump station, the current pump station. So it could have some additional benefit to us, to our sewer system, our existing sewer system.
I'd ask also, if I could, real quickly, the issue of the buffer, that's been agreed on, and that's agreed on, and it's permanent. You see that as a permanent buffer area? Is that something that you could decide to develop later, or?
No.
I could, Mike, that slide, the slide before that.
Our agreement is that it will not be developed, and that we're going to sign a more form, we have an agreement in principle, we're going to sign a more formal agreement here very shortly, but we're willing to put it in the deed restrictions and the deed record that it never, even if we sell the property, it can't be developed.
Go ahead. Just one more quick question. I'm sure you must have studied the demographics and the students that we attract at Tech, and believe that there's enough of those students who would be...
I do.
...for fill those apartments.
Absolutely.
I was happy to live in Evans Hall when I was...
No, I do. It's a growing school. It's a, we're excited to be able to move forward.
So, no, I would just ask, we talked about this Monday in work session about the buffer, and now that I hear this has been worked out, so it requires, it doesn't require us doing anything with a zoning of a buffer that's going to be agreed upon, and you're in agreement, Mr. Burks. You're happy with that? Okay, so, all right.
We wouldn't have to do anything. One thing I failed to mention, and they're indicating that they would do this in phases. Is that correct? You're still planning on doing this in phases? Well, it's not required, but I thought, the site plan does indicate that. I thought you might want to know, so.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
I'd like to comment. Mr. Jones, I appreciate you reaching out to Mr. Burke's concern about, you know, coming into his neighborhood and accommodating him more than what he thought was originally. One of the conditions, I think, I remember in work when you came to Planning Commission, was you not only have to have a financial obligation as far as renting and a background check on that, but then there are behavioral clauses that you have for some of your tenants that you're not going to have?
Well, sure, yeah. We do have, we run a criminal check and a financial credit check for, on the tenant and the guarantor. Every tenant has a guarantor. So if it's a three-bedroom unit, there's three guarantors on the same unit, and they have a criminal background also. We have an onsite management company. We allow one person per bedroom, and we, that's the, we're investing a great deal of money, and it's really the only way to ensure that our investment is going to produce a good return, and that's to maintain behavior at these properties.
Any other comments from the council?
I could briefly comment, Mayor, just, and I would echo Ms. Burke what you said. We do need to be consistently concerned about our image. We do need consistent, we need, we need to, we're getting pretty good at attracting people to town and having them good experience here while they're here, but we need, it needs to look good when they come in. And we've got some things on the table to address that, but I couldn't agree more with what you said about community image.
All vote?
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Hold a public hearing, item C, and consider on first reading ordinance 0150307, rezoning 726 West End Street from RS10 Single Family Residential to RD Single Family and Duplex Residential. Mr. Mills?
Mayor and councilmembers, this proposed rezoning was initiated by Ms. Pam Ely on behalf of the property owner, which is Putnam County Habitat and Humanity. Mike, okay. Give one more there, Mike, please. And one more. This is aerial view of the property. Okay, stop there, please. The subject property is identified as parcel 42 on Tax Map 53H, Group A, and consists of approximately 16.19 acres. It's contiguous with properties zoned as RS10 to the north and east, and with properties zoned as CI, Commercial Industrial Mixed Use to the south. The southern boundary of the property borders the rideaway of the Nashville and Eastern Railroad. West End Park is adjacent on the north side of West End Street. The RD zoning district is intended to provide a moderate-density, single- and two-family residential environment in areas where public sewer is available. Public sewer, water, and electric service are all available to the subject property. The minimum lot area per dwelling requirement in the RD district is 5,000 square feet. Based on a land area of 16.1 acres, approximately 140 dwelling units could be located on the property under RD zoning. Approximately 70 dwelling units could be located on the property under the present RS10 zoning. Habitat Humanity acquired the subject property in 2014 and hired a consultant firm to examine how best to develop the property to meet the organization's housing goals. In late 2014, a series of public meetings were held in the West End neighborhood, with one of the purposes being identifying a development scenario for the subject property. A site plan was created by the consultant and provides for a mixture of housing types with a total density of 60 units. Mike, if you could go forward there. And this was the site plan that was developed by the consulting group. A significant amount, as you can see from this, of the open space or green space is included in the plan. While the current density is below what could be developed under the current zoning, the variety of housing types, including townhouses and cottages on small lots, is not allowed in the RS10 district. So this is not a rezoning for density. It's a potential rezoning to allow flexibility in housing types. Again, the Rose RD District, while allowing a greater density, also allows greater flexibility in housing types. Mike, if you could click through a few more, I think I've got some, it's another layout, and I've got some elevations of the structures that, how they're going to look in the development. Okay, if you could stop there. The Cookville 2030 Plan depicts the property as being best suited for mixed-density residential development. The requested RD zoning fits within this land use classification. It should also be noted that the property is also depicted in our 2030 Plan as being in an area in need of redevelopment and revitalization. The proposed rezoning was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission and is recommended by the Planning Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Would anyone like to speak to this ordinance from the public? No? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll...
Oh, he wants to speak? Yes.
Sure, just step to the podium and identify yourself. You'll have about three minutes to make statements pertaining to this ordinance item.
Hello. My name is Bill Abbott, and I addressed the board here a little over five years ago. Different councilmen at that time, but I'm sure you're as good as they are. We have a problem out on Fort 10 and Charleston Place, and a lot of the other people do, too, but...
Wait, just a second. Is this pertaining to this agenda item right here, sir?
Oh, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is just...
I'm kind of hard of hearing.
Okay, at the end of the meeting, we can talk about what you're, this is just this agenda item. No problem.
I'm coming.
No problem. Anyone else to speak to this agenda item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion. We'll now, do we have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Discussion among the council.
I just want to applaud Habitat for doing this. This is going to be a shot in the arm. I had a business in this neighborhood for many, many years, and this is a underdeveloped part of town, and I think this is going to be a shot in the arm that this area that is underdeveloped will attract. And I think this is going to be a shot in the arm that this area that is underdeveloped will attract. And, you know, and it is part of the area of town that we've recognized that needs a revitalization. And I applaud you for doing this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think one of the fascinating things about this is that, of course, everybody, we love, I love Habitat and I appreciate so much what they, what they do for this community and for the, the people that they serve. Uh, but one of the interesting things about that is that they've, they've, that everybody dreams to own a home. The dream is now mixed density homes, mixed homes. It's townhomes. I mean, and so I, I'm fascinated by that because as, as these council member knows, past council members knows and planning commission members knows that the, the pressure for townhomes and duplexes and things like that, it's huge. But it's not without merit because if you've got folks, if their dream is to, this is part of their dream. And I, I'm, I, I think it's just interesting and I'm glad, I'm glad to be able to vote for this. Thank you, James, and the work that you guys have done.
Anyone else?
I'll just echo their comments. I visited this site with Pam and looked at it and just the, the pride that it's going to instill, not just for this development, but for the whole neighborhood. And I know the electric department's doing a lot of things to upgrade the lighting and, and other things in this neighborhood. So this is exciting and we're thankful that, for what Habitat's doing and to make this come to reality.
All right, seeing no other comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item D, Consider Resolution R-150406, authorizing the Acceptance of the Workers' Compensation Act of Tennessee by Exempted Employer, Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, this resolution is requested basically to satisfy a records update for the Tennessee Division of Workers' Compensation. The division is conducting an audit to determine the accuracy of its records regarding governmental entities acceptance of the state's workers' compensation statute. The city is an exempt employer from the operation of the workers' compensation law, but like most, many governmental entities, we do elect to be covered by the law and we have been for many, many years. Uh, your adoption of the resolution simply authorizes submission of the required notice of acceptance to comply with their records request. Be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, but I would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item E, Consider Resolution R-150407, granting authority to the Upper Cumberland Regional Airport Board to sell certain wetland mitigation properties. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this resolution would authorize the Upper Cumberland Regional Airport Board to sell two pieces of property that were purchased in two thousand and five. With the assistance of the Federal Aviation Administration, those properties were originally purchased as wetland mitigation sites. The airport was looking at expanding the, the terminal and they needed the property to mitigate where they were looking at expanding the terminal and they purchased these two properties, again with the assistance from Federal Aviation Administration. The airport abandoned the idea to expand that terminal. They've requested that these properties be sold. They have no use for them and have no plans to utilize those in the future, they have said. And this would authorize the sale of that, those two properties. There is, just to give everyone a reference, that's a memo from the airport authority requesting the authorization to sell those properties. Just to give you an idea of where the properties are located, the green dot on the map is the actual airport site and the two, the two properties, one is south or, or east of Highway one-eleven, east of the airport. And the other one is some thirteen miles south of the airport. So those are the two locations. And again, they have, have no plans for those in the future and would recommend approval.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Discussion among the council. This isn't a public hearing, so, so we wouldn't necessarily on that.
I have something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, and one of the things, I don't know if it was mentioned, if it was, because I didn't hear it, but the purchaser of this, of this, of these two wetlands mitigation properties would continue to keep it as wetlands mitigation property.
Yes, absolutely.
It would have the conservational, continue to have its conservational needs and uses and the boost that it gives to our area. So it would, it's not going to be just bulldozed over and houses put up there. It's going to continue to have the conservation effect that it already does.
Absolutely. Yes. Any other discussion among the council? Did you have something pertaining to this?
Yeah, I have two questions and, and something to say if, depending on the answers.
Well, this isn't a public hearing though, is the thing about it. So, I mean, we're not. I mean, I can give you a couple of minutes if you want to speak to this, but it's not a public hearing that we can, that we would debate back and forth necessarily on this agenda item. Does that make sense? But I mean, I, I'd be glad to entertain for a couple of minutes if you'd like to speak to this. Yes, okay.
Sure. So it's going to be in White County, right? And is this sale for the proposed retail development on Interstate Drive in Walnut for them to try to mitigate? Because just, just, and how, how long's the authorization good for? And are there any contingencies? Like, well, if they don't move forward with that, does the airport authority just then now have authority to sell this whenever? Because if that is, just to let you know, TDEC in their rules is very strict about, well, not very strict. They have very strong rules about the procedure. So for wetland destruction, its avoidance, minimizing impact and mitigation is the, at the bottom and only if it meets certain requirements. And then of mitigation, their preservation of existing wetlands is at the very bottom of the list of options. So if that's the reason, I just wanted to make sure you were all.
Thank you. Any other discussion among the council?
Mayor, it's my understanding also that the three other entities, City of Sparta, White County and Putnam County, would have to vote on this and that resolution is on there.
Yes, I, I serve on the, on the airport board, so I mean, I can speak a little bit to this. It, it is two parcels that are not needed. They have actually been grown up and are not serving the purpose of which they're intended, which is mitigation sites. TDEC is very interested in have, in acquiring these. They have always been. The, these sites, now we had, the FAA had to grant approval to sell them. The FAA has granted approval to sell them. That is, the four governments will vote to sell them to an environmental firm and they will be forever protected as environmental wetland sites. So, and then the monies from this sale will then be spent back only on, because it is FAA money, the monies will be spent back only on the airport. That's all they can be spent on. And they, they will be used for improvements since it was federal money that purchased them originally. So that is the story on it. And we're taking action tonight and then the other entities will as well. So, any other discussion among the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Four yes, one abstained, motion carries.
Okay, item F, Consider Approval of Year Two Professional Service Contract with Retail Strategies, Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, a year ago, the city contracted with Retail Strategies to do some extensive research work and to help us in the retail development in Cookeville. Retail Strategies has done various work for us over that time period in market assessments of the real estate assets within the city of Cookeville, developing websites and tools for not only the city of Cookeville to utilize in retail development, but also retailers to, to use and to expand and explore information and provide information about Cookeville. Uh, they developed a strategic recruitment plan on behalf of the city for retail development and executed that plan. They represent the city of Cookeville in retail conferences and trying to promote Cookeville. That first contract, the first year was a thirty-eight thousand dollar contract. Uh, year two, continue to work with them as a twenty-five thousand dollar contract. Year two, they would continue to update their research and provide information to the, the retail development world and to continue to promote Cookeville to retailers. And they would continue to update that strategic retail plan, make that available, making sure that retail prospects that are out there looking for sites, that they're aware of Cookeville and what we have to offer. And they would continue to represent us at these national conferences. And again, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar contract for year two and I would ask your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Uh, I think this has been money well spent for us. They've been a great advocate for Cookeville, selling the message with data that developers and retailers need to see to make a decision. So we're starting to see some results with inquiries with the city. So I think it's, well, money well spent.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item G, Consider Approval of Proposal for Banking Services, All Departments, and Authorize the Interim City Manager to Execute a Four-Year Bank Service Agreement with an Option to Renew for Two Additional One-Year Periods. Brenda Amel.
Mayor and council members, last month, we opened proposals for banking services for the city. We sent RFPs to all the local banks and we received three proposals in response. First Tennessee Bank, Regions Bank, who is our local current provider, and US Bank. We asked in the RFP for information so that we could evaluate them in three areas. Qualifications and experience, which basically covered things like they had to be part of the, the state bank collateral pool and have a local branch in Cookeville. And then, secondly, on technical capabilities, whether or not they can provide all the services that we require. We use internet banking on a daily basis to do transfers, direct deposit, ACH activity, all that kind of stuff. And then, thirdly, and most importantly, on pricing, the fees and the interest earnings. And then to evaluate them, we took a twelve-month average of all of our transactions and volumes and actually calculated out each proposal with the fees and the interest rates that they were proposing for comparison. And based on the current Fed funds rate, the greatest net interest credit to the city is with the Regions Bank proposal. Um, we have worked with Regions for a number of years now and have been very satisfied with their service. And I would like to recommend that we continue with Regions Bank with your approval.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item H, Consider Authorizing the Interim City Manager Enter Into a Contract Amendment Number Five with Wiser Consultants Relative to the Bennett Road Extension Project. Mr. Brown.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, our Bennett Road Extension Project must keep pace with the fifth interchange progress. In order to try to avoid any delays, this amendment would allow the city to pay two of the subcontractors for Wiser directly instead of having to route the bills through the engineering consultant and then they would route the bills to us, then we would pay the consultant and then they would pay the, the consultants for the Wiser. What the, this would allow us to do, Wiser would approve the pay request from the two sub, two consultants for the Wiser, the Carol Croft and Associates, who is obtaining property for the project, and Clinton Engineering, who's doing the surveying. So this would not add any money to the, to the contract with Wiser at all. It just streamlines the payment progress. So hopefully the consultants will keep on a timely manner, getting the work done and not have any delays in it. I request your approval.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven I, Consider Authorizing the Interim City Manager to Sign An Agreement with Nashville and Eastern Railroad Relative to the Water Line for the Bennett Road North Project. Mr. Kelly.
Mayor and council, seeking authorization for the interim city manager to enter into a waterline agreement crossing the railroad rightaway. Uh, we're planning to install a new waterline along the new Bennett Road North and we'll need to cross the rightaway. There is an agreement in there, in the, in your packet. It's a standard agreement that we have many of in our, in our department. The total cost, it's a one-time fee of eight hundred dollars and we would recommend your approval.
Thank you. I move approval of the agreement, but the city does not waive its immunities pursuant to the Tennessee Governmental Tort Liability Act. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item seven J, Consider Rejecting Bid Awarded on Twelve-Four-Fourteen for a Long Arm Brush Truck and Consider Awarding the Third Lowest Bid. Mr. Brown.
Mayor and council, last fall, we opened bids on a brush truck. Stringfellow was the low bidder. The bid we accepted was for one hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Their truck supplier is a international truck landmark was supplying that. They're having trouble getting that truck supplied to Stringfellow. So as of right now, they have not even started making the truck. The bid document said we would get the truck within one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty days. The hundred and fifty days will be up in May. As you well know, with the ice storm, we have a lot of brush in town and if we wait till the middle of summer before we get that, I think it's in the delay us picking that up. The second bidder, CMI, they, their truck was the exact same truck that Stringfellow can't get and they have the same trouble. The third trucks, Stringfellow does have on the lot, that they can put the same box and clamshell on it. Only difference, it'll be a freightliner truck instead of an international. We can get that truck in thirty to forty-five days. The difference being it's, the bid, taking the five-year extended warranty, is one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. That's four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars more than what the approved bid was. I would recommend we reject the bids from last November, award the new bid on the condition they can get this truck here within thirty to forty-five days. I would recommend that approve, approve that.
So moved.
So we have a motion and a second. And the motion will be to reject and then award the new bid. So we have a motion and a second for that. Do we have any discussion among the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will have a time of hearing of citizens, open public. Anyone that would like to speak to something not dealt with on the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to do that? Did you want to speak? Yes, sir. A couple of points of order. Step to the podium and state your name and address. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made on items of general relevance. Once the time sounds, you will need to wrap up your comments within ten seconds. Comments should be directed to the entire council and not individual members in engaging in any verbal attacks or comments intending to insult, abuse, malign, or slander any individual. Shall be called for termination of time privileges and expulsion from council. Go right ahead, sir.
Yes, my name's Bill Abbott and I live at Fort Tenon Charleston Drive. We have a couple of problems out there. One is the, what they call a street. It's called Castle Drive. When they put those homes out on the north side of us thirty years ago, they use that as an access road. And it wasn't a street. It's only sixteen and a half feet wide. And we got cars and trucks going through and that, one has to stop so the other one can pass. And, uh, there's a little place also in the road where all the water dumps over into my yard. And I did put stakes up in my yard. I guess I got too close to the road and the city came along and said, you can't have those stakes up. But people would go out into my yard. Well, it's not, it's really the cities, but I'm the one that takes care of it. And, um, I, it would, I would really like to have somebody come out and take a look at this. And, um, I'm afraid, and we also have a small ditch on the, on the north side of that road that's, that just drops off about three, three and a half feet. And, uh, the five, almost six years I've lived there, I've always been afraid that somebody is going to go off down in there and we're going to have a lawsuit against the city. No, and we live out there with no curbing at all. And the city accepted that when they formatted everything and that, that's, and I accepted when I bought the, the house. But we need, and, and the other problem that we have is when they built Old Kentucky Place up there north of us, they're a lot higher than we are. And there used to be a, a pit up there, which they filled in and that was kind of a drain up there where that water wouldn't come down on us. But I don't know how the drainage is out there, but I know when we have a heavy rain, that rain comes down and has got within five feet of my house. And if you remember, Mayor, I brought those, all those pictures and, and you said, you wondered why I was, had a kind voice. You'd kind of be upset at what's going on out here. But I ended up spending about thirty. about $30,000 to make that so we could get the water out away from the house. But I'd like them to look at this and see if, Mr. Brown told me, he said, you come back in five years and maybe we can take a look at it and see if we can allot for some, some of the monies and it, it won't be a, it'll be quite a bit of money to fix it because it's, it's a wrong situation.
All right.
And I'd, I'd really appreciate it if you'd, if you'd look at that concern.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davidson, maybe perhaps you could look at that and, and get with Mr. Brown and see at a time that he can, can visit with him and see what you can get worked up.
We'll sit down and Greg and we'll take a look at whatever options we can come up with.
They'll, they'll contact you and see what kind of options they can come up with and meet with you at some point, okay?
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to address the council? No? All right, well, I want to, I want to wish everyone a happy Easter and, and certainly tell you if you, my pastor, earlier, one of our pastors, Bobby Sebastian from Life Church, if you, if you don't have a, a service to attend, would certainly invite you. We're meeting at the Hooper Evelyn Center at 10:00 AM on Sunday morning and certainly more than welcome to attend and just hope that you will have, have a day of reflection and remembrance and, and thankfulness for, for God and for our community and, and for your family. So any other comments from the council? We will stand adjourned.